Order, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for the much-needed moisture from last week's winter storms. And thank you for the protection from those storms. We could have been worse off, but we weren't. And also for the protection of the city of Hazen and its citizens. Please bless tonight's meeting and our commission members that would make decisions for this wonderful Hazen community. In your name we pray, amen. Reading and approval of minutes from March seventeenth.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. Okay, four, approval of the agenda. Any additions, Monty, or anything?
Minor note down there at six B.
I think motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion by Weidrich, second. Second by Fokerts, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. All right, five, A, Expedition Estates, Mr. Tim Williams. Hi, welcome.
Thanks for having me.
You bet.
Just an update, we're gonna finish out a creek road in Hazen, June. We, uh, we've completed those repairs on our creek. We have, uh, we have endured these past four years with litigation. Uh, the, uh, my estimation, it was the compaction and some errors that we weren't aware of between the engineer and the contractor that we had hired. But, uh, we completed the repairs. We have the paving going in. We couldn't get it done last year. And, uh, and I just wanted to give you that update. I mean, I've been out for a month and we need communication, that's fine. We've done everything we said we'd do. We came in, we created the neighborhood. We had some hiccups with the road, of course. That's impacted our ability to sell homes tremendously. But, uh, one of the things that I wanted to ask you about is you're holding permits for the completion of the road, but that impacts our ability to sell. Really, we might not impediment removed. I mean, we have, we have been reliable in what we've been, what we've represented to the city and we've always followed through. So I don't think that limitation should be required. And the, uh, the second problem, I'd say, once we complete the road and we complete the houses that are under construction now, I'd like to the city council to consider, uh, transferring the property back to the city. You guys can control the property lot. Not, you know, we've created it, we've done, you know, we've sold a number of homes, but it's an asset to the city. You have a commercial property up front and you have thirty-plus lots remaining. And, uh, and I would, I don't know how long Darrell and I can continue coming out here over the years if we're selling like two or three houses a year. So I think if you, if we're in your hands, you'd be able to better maintain it and pay attention to it and the city would have control over it.
Any comment, discussion on that? From our members?
So then you're saying, I guess, we would then, I guess, we would then have to pay you these lots? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. Do specials or something, you know, pays, buys the lot. We'd get a release, a lot, a lien, a lot release.
One of the specials, is that what you said?
Yeah, I don't know how you finance it, but, I mean, I, we're financing it right now.
Okay.
So we'd be willing to transfer for whatever we have financed amount plus, plus a little extra for miscellaneous costs along the way and, and, uh, and then you get to control it.
So then two, I guess, a price tag on this? I guess, do you know, remember?
Uh, I think we owe about one point three million on the property at the moment. I'd have to check.
Yeah.
Ultimately, ballpark.
Okay.
Mark, A.
I think before the city would really engage in a lot of conversation about buying the properties to then go turn around and resell. Um, I think I'd wanna take, Pat and I think both wanna take a little closer look at that and study that. Can get into some complicated issues as far as, uh, potential for every one of those lots having to go through a bidding process to sell those for the city. Um, and things like that where it could get to be a little bit of a complicated issue if the city is selling individual lots, that's, I don't wanna say that no city does that, but that's a little bit of a, I'll say, atypical result where the city's actively involved in developments. But I'm not gonna say that it's completely unfeasible. Um, I think both Pat and I would need to look at what the pros and cons are.
Sure.
And get back to you on that, um, and kinda go through that. But I think that before that would take place, I think we definitely would want to see the project completed with the road paving and things like that. Um, that would be one of the recommendations that I would definitely have, because we just don't want to be in a situation where it's not, I'll say, turnkey-ready for development. Um, and the city's got additional expend, expenditures on top of that. And then the other question that would come into play is, um, how that aligns with our budget and forecasted growth and things like that. Because, um, when you start talking about committing a million three to a project and depending upon what the sales is, that could really throw a pretty big wrench into the city budget, I'm thinking.
Yeah, could.
Um, so I think those are all things that we, before we commit, that we'd wanna take a pretty serious look at.
That's reasonable.
Jared, do you have any comment to any of that with our engineering?
So Jared Klumani, uh, more engineering, uh, we've been working alongside those guys. You know, this subdivision started many years ago, like you mentioned, and then there was some unfortunate problems with the subdivision, soil compaction. Not all of that is resolved. Sanitary sewer's been mostly replaced out there, so I think any conversations you're having about transferring or sale and, and doing this stuff, you just wanna make sure that, um, the infrastructure is already shared over from them to you. So there is some final inspections that have to happen and some, and some rework, I believe. But, um, I think the last correspondence you had with them is you asked them for a schedule to get that remaining work done. So I guess, I would probably, you know, in addition to the paving you're talking about, please just make sure that the schedule includes any remaining work that has to happen.
What's the remaining work?
There's, there's some water valves that aren't right.
Oh, there's two? Is there two?
There's problems with the sanitary sewer on eleventh as well, and I,
Yeah, we need to talk about that.
Yeah. Okay. There, there could be some different ways to fix that, but that is, that's kind of what I'm aware of, is the sewer on eleventh, some valves and some,
So, so when we, when we went to replace that, it was on a creek, it's a memory collection. And then what's on eleventh, you know, it's been in place for how many years now? Six, seven?
Yeah.
Um, there's slight sagging pipe, but the pipes function. And there was two gate valves, I think. For water on that street that needed to be corrected, but I thought, didn't that take place? I don't remember.
The, the valves?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
The valves are being checked.
Yeah.
If they've been done, they've been done.
Yeah, I don't remember.
So, when this, when the area was televised, when, when you build a subdivision, you move dirt, you put pipe in the ground, you know, they use plastic pipe for the sanitary sewer, which is really common.
Yeah.
The health department classifies that as flexible pipe. So they require a number of tests before it can be turned over and put into use. So make you run a camera through it and then pull a mandrel test through it to prove that it's not,
I thought that was done. We did, we did a mandrel on eleventh.
Not on eleventh.
No?
No, not on eleventh. If it, if it needs to happen, we can certainly let this stuff, so.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yep. That'd be my recommendation, is just that we make sure that the stuff is done that needs to get done.
Okay.
I guess what would the, what does it look like for you if we do wanna change or do whatever with our permitting structure out there and things like that? I guess, what are your thoughts on that?
I mean, the restriction on the permits?
Sure.
What is the, well, I mean, it's an impediment to selling, right? So how can we make any money if, you know, we can't sell?
Yeah, no, and I can empathize with that. I'm just, I, I, I'm just wondering what it looks like to you if, if things were critiqued in that aspect?
I don't know if I understand that.
I mean, would you, are you still wanting to get out of the?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Get out?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I think so. We've been at it for a while.
Sure.
And, uh, it's been, it's been a good run, but,
Sure.
If we, if we could create, and we've created, and turn over an asset, then it's problem-free with you guys, and it's an asset for the city. Darrell and I would be happy to turn it over.
Sure.
Well, it kinda sounds like we need to dot our i's and cross our t's.
Absolutely.
And, uh, I don't know if we'll have all that done by next meeting. I mean, it's probably,
We could certainly spend some time and Monty and I and Pat can maybe have some conversations along with maybe Brent and kinda go through some pros and cons and maybe, maybe have some answers by the next meeting. Um, I don't wanna overcommit for everybody else's schedule, but, um, it sounds like this is something that's important to have the conversation and see if there's some resolutions that can be made. Um, and see where we're at. I don't wanna commit to a yea or a nay, but I think it's something that needs to be researched a little bit more in detail.
Right. Monty, that's something we could get in discussion with, with Pat and Mark, and then once we're ready to bring that back to a agenda, you can let Tim and Darrell go then, is that fair?
Yes, and Tim can always appear by teams when you have your opinions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe immediately.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Although I think appearing in person's, you know, a little more effective.
Right. Anything else, Tim?
No, sir.
All right.
Thank you for, uh, thank you for the time and listening.
You bet, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thanks, Darrell. Five B, Jared?
Hi, Jared Klumani, more engineering. Copy of the engineer's report is there, so, um, I'm gonna skip over the first one, typically provide the update on Expedition Estates. Construction expected to start up in the springtime. Alley improvements, again, not much to bring up other than we're aware of some corrective work that has to happen out there. Otherwise, there was some work, I don't have a, a schedule from Winkler, it's a little bit soon for that, but so if you button that up, there'll be some special assessments to those buildings and that, that project doesn't finish this summer. But we're, I would say we're ninety-five percent done with that. We just got suspended because of winter suspension. Sanitary sewer improvements, so there's a project ordered at CC Steel last fall. Um, they're gonna be doing some spot repairs and some sanitary sewer. They're gonna be rehabbing manholes, and they're gonna be putting a cure-in-place liner inside of the sewer veins that are, are clay. It's the whole part, the old main part of town that was televised in twenty twenty-three, so that work's gonna happen this summer. Monty's got a copy. We had a pre-construction meeting for that project, um, probably two weeks ago, but this lays out the contractor's schedule. CC Steel's general contractor, they will self-perform a lot of the work, but not all of the work. They will have subs. The subs have been reviewed and approved, um, I don't have any problem with that, but CC Steel will be here first. They'll be the ones doing spot repairs, making the mess, digging up the streets, fixing those things, so. That work is gonna start in May. Everything's weather-dependent right now. I got a pretty good idea of when they're gonna start, but it's, it's not a hundred percent. I would expect the last thing they do is paving, um, asphalt patches over the top of the sanitary sewer spot repairs. In my opinion, we're better off leaving those as long as possible this summer. I know they're a nuisance, but we'll have a number of gravel patches wherever those spot repairs were done. Let them sit, let them settle, let them get compacted. Anyways, that, that kinda ties with some other things. I'll, I'll mention that in just a second. Any questions regarding that sewer project?
So you had provided us some dates, some feedback with some of the big dates that the city had, um, for community events that could impact this. There was a couple of dates that were missing on there. Chalk Fest wasn't on there.
Yeah.
And then Fall Harvest wasn't on there, and I think those are pretty significant community events that you probably wanna potentially be able to work around one way or another.
Yeah. And, and I will do that. And so think of, I would say the majority of this work is gonna be what I'd call trenchless, where they'll have a truck parked, we don't want them on Main Street during Chalk Fest, of course, but, you know, they'll be parked around that manhole, coned around it, and they'll be doing work in that and then down through the, the manhole, through the pipe into the next manhole, so majority of it'll be trenchless. I don't expect we'll have disruptions to sewer, but it could, I mean, if we were working on a block and there's festival going on, we couldn't use the sewer, that'd be a big deal. So I, I see the need to avoid those. I don't, I don't see this problem. I don't know those dates from you yet, but I'll figure them out.
I'll do it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next thing is concrete repairs, that's just on the list. There's about twenty thousand worth of work you guys hired Winkler to do. Those, we discussed the last meeting, I was on the conference call at that time. I don't have a schedule for that yet, but I will. Next thing I wanted to talk about is capital improvement plan updates, so you should have a short document in front of you. I'm not gonna go through this in the nth degree. What I really wanna do is kinda explain what's going on. In January of twenty twenty-three, in kind of in conjunction with you updating your comprehensive plan, um, we put together a list of capital improvement plan needs. Infrastructure is, is something that we, we try to track and keep track of and have an idea of the life expectancy of it and then when it needs to be replaced, so you guys can make informed decisions. If I just kinda open up that document, this is meant to just be an supplement, or a supplement. It's been a little over two years since we put this together. So this was the board approved by me by twenty twenty-three. Thank you for this question. Since that time, those concrete projects have been completed. Some of the work on item number five, the water service line inventory, has happened. Ultimately, if lift service lines are replaced, you know, we'll have to do that. The lift stations here, we've done two of the lift station control panels, not all of them. But generally, we're, we're kinda just, we, we know these are your priorities. We know this is the list of capital improvement needs long-term, kinda laying out, you know, by year. When we, you know, when we expect infrastructure to reach its end of its life, when, when we expect to be chip sealing streets in the future, that's not the schedule. So as we cross things off, sometimes things get added to the list. So the, the pages that, that follow here, and I should say, because these are printouts from your, your, your web-based capital improvement plan. You as a city can go on there and, and look at that. You can play with it, you can create printouts, you can use it for budgeting time, you can use it however you see fit. But, um, generally, we, again, the, the, the next few items on there are four projects that kinda came out of the committee. So the committee was the, um, um, Water and Sewer Commissioner, the AC, or the city staff that deals with the maintenance of it. As we were walking through updating the capital improvement plan list, we kinda got into talking. There's four projects that we'd like to add, um, to your radar. Um, the four projects are, there's a, or there's a roadway around Semex where, I would say that the land use has changed slightly and there's more truck traffic happening on that, in that area, so. There's already starting to be some blowouts. If you look close, you'll see now the street is in way worse condition for those two blocks than the surrounding areas, so. The need, at a minimum, there needs to be a patch where the, um, road blew out in the spring. But it's probably bigger than, than what you can, can see. So this is a sample of, of how that project looked, starting to come together. Uh, I've already kinda gotten the feedback from Public Works that this is probably too big of an area. I'm showing this full street on the west side of Semex and the full one all the way on the south. It doesn't have to be that big, but it's my job to kinda put together a, um, a scope and, and give you opinions of cost, help guide decisions. Again, if you decide that you're just gonna patch it, so be it, but we, we do have a need there to improve that street. The cost estimate I put together here, five hundred and thirty thousand is based on doing it from here all the way over here. You could probably do some simple math, and if you did half of that, it'd be half the cost. Maybe not quite, but, you know, you can kinda, in your mind, understand how much it costs to fully reconstruct streets. And what we're talking here is reconstructing it appropriate for trucks, so either a really heavy asphalt section or a concrete section. The cost estimate here we put together is based on concrete, so it is higher. So I don't really want to, um, do fifty different cost estimates, but we can certainly do a couple. And I want you guys, please, look at that section over the next few weeks. And, uh, if you'd like us to modify that, and if it, if it is something we wanna do this summer or next summer, we should, we should start talking about it pretty quick, because there's some steps to follow, um, as far as designing and protests and bidding and all that kinda stuff, so. Again, it doesn't have to be that inclusive, it can be smaller, but, um, like, we're just kicking the can down the road, which sometimes you gotta do.
I don't, I could just put in a opinion right away. I just drew a line through here, just a line halfway through there, so you can get past.
Right at six?
Or a little bit past. Because, I mean, if you, if you don't go where it passed, thinking about truck traffic rolling in there, you know, if you don't go past that street right there, you're gonna have a blowout at that transition, you know what I mean?
You're talking about the intersection of six and seven?
Yeah, so if you took the theater and you, like, just drew a halfway line right through the theater.
And then just stop, stop the, the road rebuild there?
Yeah.
Because there's trucks that are continuously pulling off Sixth Avenue onto, onto Seven Thirty.
Right here, too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's where I live, and there's, I would say at least three nights a week, there's three or more semis, trucks and trailers.
Coming in.
I would say it's all, I would say the traffic, the truck traffic also is consistent on six as it is turning down north.
Really?
Yeah. It's a lot of truck traffic.
So then this is unrealistic to go that far, then?
It's been standing up really good in front of the fire hall, but that's not saying that it won't give out.
I thought,
Where you drew your line, yeah, that's kinda where the bulk of the training is on.
I thought there was more traffic coming off of two hundred, you know, south and turning in, but I didn't realize we had just a lot.
Turn on the sixth, the lot, too.
It's awful, right?
Yeah.
It's gonna look bad right now. It has to get patched right before we decide that. You guys want, if you want cost estimates, if you want different opinions, if you want scenarios, let's talk about it.
Right. Could we get another cost estimate with the twelve inches of gravel and six inches of asphalt?
Asphalt version, okay.
Just to compare versus this concrete? Was this four inches of concrete, I'm guessing?
No, I think it was six.
Six inches?
I'll verify that, though.
Okay.
Because, yes, we can build, we can build truck routes out of asphalt and con, and concrete, they're just, they're different. And more asphalt, less concrete, you know, there's, there's just, there's different ways.
The lifespan difference between the two?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I could, I could do a lifecycle cost analysis and prove to you that concrete is the better investment. Because cap, concrete's gonna be a higher capital cost and very low maintenance, and asphalt is gonna be, you know, capital cost of X, and then it's gonna be mill and overlay after twelve years, and then chip seal, and then a mill overlay, and it's just,
Could, could we get that drawn up, too, just so we can,
Sure.
Show when we come by ourselves?
Very, very simple spreadsheet that will show you that.
I appreciate it.
Did you bake yourself this with concrete? Because you have, in your scope, you have it replaced with a concrete section.
Yeah.
The part of it you must have had,
This here is all concrete.
The red,
A hundred percent?
Hundred percent.
The red, the red part, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a little overkill, I think, having the whole thing in concrete, I would think, I don't know.
Not necessarily, if we have just as much traffic, I, I, we can do a comparison, but it's, I mean, gosh, if we did,
And the reason why my, my intention, because the semis are constantly blowing that stop sign there. That's why, so I'm like laser focused on that intersection, and then I just, so I'm noticing, so that might be a bias in my hand, that I'm, I think there's more truck traffic through then than actually.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Mark would, he lives right, literally right there, so he would probably know better than me.
So as land uses change, as, as, as needs change, as this happens, you know, we'll add this to CIP list. Where, when, how this gets done is obviously, you know, it's still your decision, but it's, it's gotta be on your radar, because that, that one's, There's a couple other projects I'm gonna walk you through that are, I would say, more long-ranging. On, on page two here, this one, you can kinda see it's still in draft format, but the area south of the highway, near the grocery store area, there's only one, like, water main crossing in that area. And that's the area where they were searching for a leak last year, so that, that gave them some, some trouble, because, there, there was no way to isolate those areas, that there's insufficient valving over there. And so because of the trouble they had last fall, it was top of mind here this winter, that it would, it would really, really make sense to have a water main loop. That's the red loop crossing the road there. So the opinion of cost is, um, somewhere around four hundred thousand bucks to do two things. To, to, to tap in and loop the water main across there, like, with a directional boring type of situation, and then valving. And so it's probably a little bit of, of overkill on the valving, so there, there's probably some, there, there's a need for work over there with the looping and the valving, but there's probably some conversation about, you know, how much valving do you really want? And so I would say those numbers are starting to change as, um, as you start discussing, at what time that becomes a priority. I mean, we'll, 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 I'm just saying that these are, these are kind of budgetary numbers without a, a true scope of work dialed in yet. Make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The third thing on the list is, so everybody can kinda see here, this is asbestos cement water main. So most towns are, are, city of Hazen, you know, the original water system infrastructure would, would have been cast iron pipe water main. And generally, your cast iron was targeted and replaced in the nineties. Um, after about the late fifties, getting into the sixties, asbestos cement pipe was the next type of pipe that was used for, for water mains. So you do have two areas that are asbestos cement pipe water main. And it's, these like seven blocks, and then there's another area in town that's another five blocks. I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you when you're gonna start having trouble with that. It's, it's already at its life expectancy, it's sixty years old, so that just tells me that we're probably on borrowed time. And it doesn't have to be done tomorrow, but if we start having trouble with it, it's a, it's a bad sign. There are some communities that are targeting and doing their asbestos cement now because they're having trouble with it. You have a long list of capital improvement needs. This has to get fit in there and on your radar for someday to be done. These two areas of asbestos cement pipe do qualify for DWR grant funding, though. So you should just factor that into your decision-making when, when you decide to, where you rank these projects among your list of needs. I mean, obviously, we wanna try and stretch those lives as far as we can.
So is this like one of those line and place type of deals, or is it all gonna be torn off completely?
No, that's, that's the problem with asbestos cement is we, with water main, we, we generally don't line it, we'll burst it. But with asbestos cement pipe, we can't burst. But with asbestos cement pipe, we can't burst it because it becomes a hazard then, it becomes something you could breathe in, so. We, you could directionally bore a new line in and leave the old one in place, put the new one in, and then go make the, the service connections. So, we've done that, but lining water mains is not real common. Unless there's a very large water main and we can prove that it isn't built up, corroded on the inside, which is tough to do with sewer mains, we can send a camera through them with water mains, it's really hard. Or if there's a concrete road over it, or if there's, uh, so, I would just say generally, the trenchless methods we use with water main are either bursting or directional boring, which work. They're, they're good tools for the toolbox.
So, is bursting?
Bursting means that you take the old pipe, you use it as conduit, and dig a hole here and here, and then you pull a new pipe inside the old one, and you actually you, you're, you're replacing it with a lake sized pipe, so at the beginning of the, the, um, the cable that you're pulling it in with is like a big knife or a big head on it, so it, it kinda shatters the old pipe. And leaves the old pipe just there around it. We can do it with cast iron, we can do it with ducted iron, we can do it with plastic, we can do it with concrete, we can do it with clay, we just, it's not allowed by the EPA to do it.
Asbestos.
Yeah, that would, like you said, be harmful.
Be, it's not allowed. So, what I would like is, at some point, the board to make the motion approving these four, and that we will just add it to your list, you're gonna have to tell us where to place it on the list, and if you want any adjustments made to it. And then I guess, as I see stuff, as I see funding, I will bring it up to you. You guys have to make the motion to proceed or not proceed, or budget it in, or not budget it in, but, um, I see those four projects getting like added to your, well, your list of capital improvements. I will bring back a couple different cost estimates, asphalt versus concrete, and another life cycle cost analysis. Unless you think it's urgent, it'll probably be the, the main meeting. Unless you want it to be in two weeks, then I may have to call in and give it to you.
No, I think, I think it's fine, Casey.
I don't see that patching crew being in town until later in the year anyways, so. If, you know what I mean, like if you decide not doing anything with that, or if you just wanna patch that spot, it should be fine. All of a sudden, something happens crazy with the patching happening, I'll get you, you know, I'll get someone quicker. That's all I had, um. Yeah, um. Monty, anything on that, um, that sewer bill? The sewer bill passed, right? The, uh, it passed, but the funding was reduced. Okay, so, just mention really, really quick, sanitary sewer funding, it, there's a lot of funding for water, not, there's no funding for building roads. But, we're monitoring a few bills, one has to do with sanitary sewer infrastructure funding. We believe the legislature is gonna appropriate twenty-five million to go toward sanitary sewer infrastructure projects across the state. That's not very much money, right? I mean, they've, they've got like one point seven billion worth of need in the state identified as far as sanitary sewer needs go. Twenty-five million doesn't go very far. However, if they start this program, they're more likely to continue to fund it and, and use it, so. As, as things come up, as things change, I, I know, Monty was involved in, and, and reviewed that bill, it'd be a good vote for you cities if it, uh, if it does happen. The DOT flex funding bill, um, or program is a big deal. There are some cities that are able to use that for some, um, I'll call it urban reconstruct projects, or main streets, or main road street towns, so. If that gets passed into law, I would expect like this, this fall, there'd be an opportunity to look at that as, as far as can you match it up with any of these needs on your list or not, and not at that time. We try to pay attention to what's going on, just so we kinda know what's up. Any questions? Okay, thank you, folks.
Thanks, Jared.
Thanks.
Sounds good. Six A. Street closure hazen, parking diagram reopening, five seventeen, I'm assuming that's May seventeenth, yeah, it's okay. And is six B, that's just a different date, or it's mommy and me, okay, never mind, six A.
So, it's for a couple hours on that Saturday, May seventeenth, for their anniversary and grand reopening celebration, they wanna do the train rides, the little train thing on Main Street.
Your motion on the street closures, six A?
Over.
Second.
First by Weidrich, second by Folkerts, discussion. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Six B?
This one I will have to abstain from, it's my last business.
The street closure mommy and me, working tile on April twenty-sixth.
And they're going to do food trucks for their vendor show. They have one lined up, hoping to get a couple more, and they will just be, they won't actually close the road if similar to this last time. They'll just be parked and they'll have cones around just to-
Your motion for six B?
So, what do we?
Oop. Uh, first by Stern, second by Weidrich, discussion?
Do we actually need to fill that out, since it's not closing the street?
Right, it's not closing it, but there will be activities on it, so.
Then this, that would be parking violation, right?
Yeah, we, we just decided to approve these, just so everybody's aware.
Okay, got it. All in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving down to reports, nine A, water sewer garbage.
Whatever you think.
At this time, Casey, that, nine B? Dave?
Uh, we're just still working on track sealing and just replacing a few, uh, faded and damaged, there are screw signs.
And our weather's been cooperative?
Yeah, I can tell it has a little snow, but we'll be back at it tomorrow.
Right? Uh, the only other thing is the shop concrete repair quotes Monty did say earlier that you received a second quote from Winkler Construction?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I didn't get it on the screen.
Oh, yeah, good.
Uh, we have the estimate from Meisner Contracting from March third at the cost of three thousand two hundred dollars. Mister Win- or Mister Lee dropped off one from Winkler Construction to remove and replace the ten by twenty area, and replace with six inches of concrete and rebar, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
And that's the same as Meisner eight, Monty, the six inch rebar?
Uh, no, uh, Meisner was pour new concrete driveway, four inches, four inches thick. You can valve it in and half inch rebar.
The only question I would have is, that extra two inches with all of our heavy traffic coming in and out, is that gonna make a difference? I, my con-
Jared before he leaves?
Huh?
Why we catch Jared before he leaves?
I, I don't know that I'd feel comfortable with four inches there. You got loaders coming and going and trucks constantly, that should be a minimum of six inches.
That would be my, my guess too. The way those pictures last meeting, was it, Monty?
Do you know how thick it is nowadays? No idea, head course sample or nothing.
Yeah, I can handle it.
Yeah, there's the pictures there.
I personally would feel more comfortable with that extra two inches in rebar, I don't know, maybe it's not so real.
I will make a motion to go with Winkler Construction's bid.
Motion by Weidrich?
Second.
Second by Folkerts? Discussion?
So, I guess, was there a spec, I guess, that we spelled out, that somebody wanted?
No, no, there wasn't. There wasn't.
Well, I think I'm just curious, you know, the price of this Meisner, you know, we've said that's gotta be-
One hour and a minute?
Six. Either this could wait, you know?
Oh, yeah, they, we, I mean, that's a good point.
You guys are still using that?
Yes, yeah. Monty, do you think that'd be a problem to reach out to Josh and just ask him to?
Yeah.
What the concern of?
I or Dave can reach out to him, that's not a problem.
And then maybe put it on the agenda for next meeting?
You had a motion and a second, so. So, we're gonna act upon it.
Okay. All right, uh, roll call.
Weidrich, no. Folkerts?
No.
Stern?
No.
Hatt?
No. Motion has been denied. Now do I hear a motion to call Meisner and get a rebid for six inch with rebar?
I don't think you need a motion.
Do I need a motion to that, Monty, or no?
No.
Good, sorry, I just threw, threw a ball out there.
Throw it out, but I got it.
Thanks for catching up. All right, so we'll do that. Moving on, Monty?
We will do that.
Okay. Nine C, finance blessing library.
I don't have anything we have to say.
All right, thank you. Nine D, police fire, fourth street.
Got some ground reports for the police department. Officer Byers had eight, Officer Anthony Malberg had twenty-five, Officer Samantha Malberg had thirty-eight, and Chief Wolf had forty-eight. And that's all I got.
All right.
Jim, do you have anything?
Do I have?
No.
Okay, HCD, Myra, you ready?
Uh, we had our annual meeting at the golf course on March twenty-sixth, thirty-eight people attended, and as of that, as of March twenty-fifth, we had, we had six hundred twenty-five thousand two hundred six dollars and thirty-five cents available for operating, we're hoping to use, I mean, we've discussed, using some of that to fund maybe that CTE program. If there's no state funding, and that state funding has kinda disappeared. Hopefully, we get all that money back. No guarantees, of course. We elected one new board member, um, some of the other ones did opt to run again. Mackenzie Weidrich is our new board member, she's from the Co-Country Community, and, um, we did get a report, Heart River Career and Tech Consortium will be applying for state grant money if approved by the twenty-five legislature for new programs in Hazen and Beulah. So, we'll see what happens there. Good guest speaker is Dr. Hannah Hansen of Elevate Chiropractic, she's located in the, um, Union Bank Building. And then Mark Olson talked about the CTE, that Career and Tech Ed program. Buster talked about the SR seventy-one, and Antoinette talked about, um, Chamber, because she is such a supporter of our community. And then, now I, now that is all done. I'm working on learning, um, the Department of, North Dakota Department of Commerce's Find the Good Lives program. There is a whole section of people that wanna move to North Dakota and work here. And I've tried to connect one of our business owners with them, and it's, okay, it's worked real well, but we'll keep on working on it. Anything we can do to help our businesses, and I have visited with a couple businesses who said, you know, what are you doing to help us, it's great, you know, help us with flex pace, but what are you doing for us afterward? So, we'll have to talk about it at our upcoming meetings, once we have something in place that we do, I would, you know? I think that should be it, unless anybody has questions?
Uh, Monty, do you have anything under present?
I don't.
Um, moving down to eleven A, old business, sales tax transfer transfers.
Uh, presented this to you at the last meeting, the day has been updated with the sales tax funds received in March, so if you were to fund all those projects that we use sales tax dollars for, and which sales tax dollars had previously been pledged, it would be a total transfer of six hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and the balance after the transfer would be four hundred and thirty-seven thou- four hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Again, whichever, if any of these you want to make, you just need a motion to-
I found at the last meeting, we made a motion for that transfer. You remember that?
No.
Do I hear any action on the sales tax transfers?
I'll make a motion to transfer all four.
Motion by Weidrich to transfer all four, your second.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion?
So then all this stuff isn't, I guess, like you, you do, I guess, expenditures, right, Monty?
No, the only one would be that sanitary sewer project, you do our ten percent donation upfront, so there's actually funding in there before we make draws from the loan.
Okay.
Otherwise, everything else has already been approved, basically designated, we just haven't approved the actual transfers.
So, question on that, one of those is from two thousand six.
It's-
Why?
We were just doing, we were just doing a yearly transfer rather than the entire amount.
Gotcha. This is the balance. The rest of-
Yeah, this would be the balance from the episode.
So then that would drop off?
Yes, yeah, all four of them would drop off from now on, yeah.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Folkerts?
Aye.
Hatt?
Aye, motion carried. Public comments, thirteen. Dylan, do you have any comments? No comments, Dylan? Thanks, by the way, for coming, Dylan is preparing for his next badge, merit, whatever, for, uh, Boy Scouts, so. Listening and learning at public places, so, thanks for coming. Uh, approval of the bills?
Motion to approve bills, presented?
Motion by Weidrich?
Second.
Second by Folkerts? Discussion? Roll call? No.
We, Weidrich?
Roll, roll call, sorry.
Aye. Folkerts?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Hatt?
Aye, motion carried. One last thing before we adjourn, I just wanna, um, ask that we keep jury in our purse, thoughts and purrs. I know it's been crazy, uh, with the Facebook, uh, group that Andy's, uh, provided. Just, uh, yeah, keep in, in our thoughts and purrs, so. If there's nothing else, again, motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Motion by Weidrich?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't need a motion, sorry.
I said don't let it happen again.